Call the regular city commission and organizational meeting of Tuesday, November 9th to order. Will we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I'd like to wish you a very good evening.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the last time, Amy, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Budnick?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Scott?
Here.
Commissioner Wal?
Here.
Mayor Metzger?
Here. It's my honor to start this first My Life Meeting as a proclamation. And as a proclamation to talk both about recycling, but also about helping your neighbors. And I think before I read the proclamation, I wanted to just acknowledge the fact that I think it recognizes the neighborliness of this city and all the small things that we do for our neighbors. Not just taking recycling, but people who will help get food, people, and now with winter coming, we're going to have, you can help with leaf blowing and some snow shoveling or whatever would be helpful. There are a lot of neighbors who can't do that, and I know we all look out for them. And so I just wanted to say that, you know, a lot of the new neighbors, new people coming into Pleasant Ridge, recognize this neighborliness, that we're out here to help people. And the proclamation to Megan will be very indicative of the kind of things that Pleasant Ridgers do every day. I also want to recognize Mr. Recycle himself, Zachary. I have no proclamation for you, but I want to recognize you. A lot of you know, over my eight years, I've had a lot of, learned a lot from Ted and gotten a lot of laughs from Ted over the years in terms of his presentation. And I understand he's going to give us some information in a little while as well. So, thanks Ted for all you've done.
Thank you.
So, without further ado, I'm going to read, oops, I've been doing that all along. The 2021 proclamation recognizing Megan Peralta for her efforts to assist with recycling in Pleasant Ridge. Whereas November 15th, 2021 is recognized as American Recycles Day by Keep America Beautiful, an organization founded in 1953, whose mission is to inspire and educate people to take action every day to improve and beautify their community environment. Whereas American Recycles Day promotes a commitment to encouragement and education of citizens with knowing what materials are collected for recycling in their community, reducing the amount of waste they produce, and efforts to recycle more varied materials. And whereas the main component of America Recycles Day is to empower individual citizens to seek out opportunities to not only increase their own recycling output, but educate and assist others in doing so. And whereas Megan Peralta consistently reaches out to her fellow residents of Pleasant Ridge, offering to take non-traditional materials which can be recycled at SACRA and encourages residents to explore new possible items which can be recycled safely and effectively over and above our weekly collection items. And whereas in further education on this point, Megan Peralta accomplishes this service to her community with her two young sons in tow, putting aside personal hardships that may come with hauling a massive amount of materials in the accompaniment of two young children, but recognizing it as an opportunity to give them an invaluable lesson in protecting our environment and assisting our neighbors. Now therefore, I Kurt Metzger, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, do hereby urge all our residents to recognize and commend Megan Peralta for her recycling efforts and invaluable service to the environment, the Pleasant Ridge community, and her fellow neighbors. There's a copy of the proclamation and a little, some things to take to the recycling center. We want you to put that on your shelf.
So, my husband is so afraid the police are going to ticket me for collecting all the trash.
Thank you so much. Well, that's fun. The next item is...
Should we do, I think we have a motion for it.
Oh, I'm sorry. If I read my, I don't know, my... Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move the proclamation recognizing Megan Peralta for her recycling efforts in the city of Pleasant Ridge be approved.
Second.
May we take a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wal?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. The motion's approved. I thought we had it done already, but it's now official.
I like to do everything twice.
It's official. Okay, the next item is public discussion items not on the agenda. And I bet you Ted will, come on.
In connection with the recycling, congratulations Megan. This is really great. Ted Zachary, 68 demonstrator from the environmental committee. And I want to, I'm mainly here to say a few words that I need people to brainstorm with me. Basically about the environment. And as you know, I like to have visual aids. So I'm just going to go through these visual aids real quickly and I'll show you.
You have a good audience, isn't it?
Oh, boy.
Now, this weighs probably about 15 pounds. And if you keep on adding all these that do not go to the compost pile, then it's a lot of money that we pay to transport this to the landfill, which is not a good idea. So if you see something like this on your own property, put it in the compost pile. If you see it on your neighbor's property, grab it and put it in a compost pile. Let's be more aggressive about it. A second one is this. So often I see these being thrown out at the curb. This also goes, supposed to go to the compost because there's a lot of dirt. I say, keep the dirt on your own property and then recycle the plastic. So that's just another one, simple thing that we could do. Doesn't cost any money. And I hear I have a challenge. This saves a lot of money. This has grown in my backyard. I started out with nine plants and I got well over 75 pounds.
Ted, can you turn around so everybody can see?
This is just the medium size. My challenge is this. Two of them. Guess how many pounds I got in my backyard? I started out with nine plants. And you could win this if you get the right amount.
Sounds as good as a candy, isn't it, Jay?
Some incentive. So I challenge somebody else to plant something like a pumpkin, or this is butternut squash. And if you beat me, I don't know what I'm doing. I'll applaud you. That's what I'll do. That's for sure.
Oh, that's beautiful.
What I like to have is people gathering together to get ideas of what we could do. Like more people like Megan to go to SACRA or plant trees in certain spots.
Yes.
Like I thought of planting trees at the dog run. It just occurred to me just lately. That's a good spot for more trees to be planted near the expressway. I hope it's okay. But we might not see the shade right away, but for other generations. So, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you carve that pumpkin?
Or did you steal it from a neighbor?
I asked your neighbor for it. I have to return that.
That's right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other, as Ted takes away his visual aids. Are there any other items for public discussion? We will wait, Jay.
It's a good segue.
Hello, everyone. Jay Forman, 60 Oakdale.
Hi.
I brought a visual aid as well. This is not really why I'm up here. I had something else to talk about. But while I'm here, I had something I would like to also give to Meg from the Formans.
This is a metal item we need to collect.
Jay has squeezed more bags into the back of my car.
I've got some paint cans in the trunk.
No, I'm here to present the certified and official results of the 2022 Halloween candy collection here in Pleasant Ridge. This is our sixth year collecting. We started back in 2015. This year, the grand total, in case anyone hasn't been watching Facebook, it was 565.6 pounds, which is six pounds more than 2019. We didn't collect any last year for some reason. I don't remember exactly what was going on last year, but we also had a guessing game as we do every year on Facebook. Many guesses came in. The winning guess was from, it's kind of one of those Facebook names, Ciara Veronica. I'm sure someone knows who she is.
Ciara Bron.
Oh, good. So Shawnee already knows. So I'm sure they'll get in touch and she'll get her wonderful prestigious prize. So I want to congratulate her and thank everyone here and anyone at home who's donated the candy over the years and this year. Also to Modern Natural Baby, John and Emily who run that. They've contributed a great deal of candy to our collective weight over the years, last three years. This year, I think it was between 100 and 200 pounds just from them. And then also thanks to my neighbor Rick Rogers who's here. He helped me with the logistical side this year. We had too much that would fit in my little economy car. So I needed some additional help from a gas guzzler.
Maybe not next year now.
But again, that's all. I just wanted to share the results and thank everyone for participating and thank you all.
You didn't bring candy for us, right?
Just bragging about 500 some pounds.
Anyone else? Okay. We'll move on to the next. After Jay takes his recycles out. Move on to the next, the city commission liaison reports, starting with Commissioner Scott, historical commission.
Just a couple of quick things. The museum will be open on November 20th from 10:00 to 12:00. It's usually open the third Saturday of the month. And then we're having our Christmas tree lighting on the 6th of December. And typically we have a display in the museum, just a beautiful home display. So if you have kids, bring them to the museum on that evening to see that on the 6th.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Wal, recreation commission.
So for November, we have Thanksgiving Day bingo, except it's not a Thanksgiving Day. It's November 18th at 6:00 PM. Dinner and prizes included. Cost is $5. Registration deadline, the 11th. 50-plus day trip to the walking lightly in Ferndale and lunch at Madam in Birmingham. Wednesday, the 24th of November at 10:15. American Red Cross blood drive, December 1st, in the 3rd and the 7th. So that's three opportunities to sign up to give blood, good cause. Christmas home decorating contest. Email photos and your address to greg@gcalbeck@cityofpleasantridge.org by 12:17. Categories are best decorations and best indoor decorations. Letters to Santa due Friday, December 17th, open to Pleasant Ridge residents only. Hi kids, every year Santa looks forward to hearing from his friends in Pleasant Ridge. Mailboxes will be located at the community center and the city hall to receive your letters. Include your name and address in the letter and Santa can write back. So start making your list. Holiday arrangement workshop, four spots left. Can you sense the urgency there? Presented by Olive's Bloom Box. It's Wednesday, December 8th, 6:15. $52 for residents, 62 for non-residents. Bring your own snacks and drinks. As Commissioner Scott just mentioned, the tree lighting is Monday, December 6th at 6:00 PM at Memorial Park. Welcome the spirit of the season with your friends, neighbors, and Santa. Stay for photos of Santa. Gingerbread house making, only six spots left, Wednesday, December 22nd, 10:30 AM. Cost is $15. Join us for festive morning learning and learn how to make your very own gingerbread house. Every participant gets to keep their decorated house at the end with holiday tunes playing and hot cocoa flowing. It's a drop-off event for kids K through 6. The last thing is dinner with Santa. It's a new date, Friday, December 17th, 6:00 PM. $10 for adults and $7 for children. Registration begins on 11:15, limited to 72 people. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Amanda. Commissioner Budnick? Ferndale Public Schools and Huntington Woods Library Board.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. So FHS right now is looking for tutors. So anybody that is interested in that, they are currently looking for those that can help out. The Nest is now open for study hall. I'm not sure what the Nest is, but it sounds like a cool little meeting space. Maybe Brett, have you heard of the? Okay, perfect. You're nodding your head over there. So yeah, that's open now, which is awesome. Many clubs have started. Volleyball club, art club, and Dungeons and Dragons club, which I thought was pretty cool. The COVID case report, this is from a student, was just reporting that it's very low and infrequent. So that is encouraging. The students recently just took their PSAT and SATs. And a couple of big things. Superintendent Dania Bazzi was just named superintendent of the year.
That's huge.
Which was huge. Anybody that's matter, she makes an impact. She's a tremendous, tremendous person. So congratulations to her and to Ferndale Schools. Very fortunate to have her. And the eagle of the month was another administrator and an old Pleasant Ridger, Katie Jeffrey, a grad of Ferndale and old Pleasant Ridge resident. She was just named eagle of the month. And Ferndale Schools just celebrated its 100th birthday. And for our data-driven folks on the left, started in 1921, it was K through 8 only, and started with 313 students in only eight classes. So the class size has come down a little bit since 1921. And last, the north pool in Ferndale is being made into a new fitness center. So they're getting a whole revamp. It sounds pretty awesome. Yeah, I didn't know they had two pools. Yeah. So, yeah, they already filled it in. They're looking, they're scouting out equipment right now and looking to make a big purchase for that, so. And on to the library report. Huntington Woods Library Report is brought to us by Mary and Stacy. Thank you very much. You can find fun online storytimes for all ages at the events link on the library website. This month, Wacky Science Wednesdays continue on November 10th and 24th at 4:00 PM in the Woods Gallery. November 20th is Super Saturday where you can make a tie dye turkey craft project. All ages are welcome, Amanda. And for adults, the speaker series this month features Patricia Marr, who will discuss ladies of the lights, Michigan women in the U.S. lighthouse service. Over 40 Michigan women have tended the Great Lakes lights since the 1840s. Come here about their brave contributions and assisting ships of Great Lakes performing this dangerous job. This will take place in the Woods Gallery on Wednesday, November 17th at 7:00 PM. And finally, need to print something? The Huntington Woods Library offers a mobile printing service, which allows you to print documents at the library for a whopping 10 cents per page. So go to their website, follow the instructions, and you can print from your home PC or your mobile device. Pick up anytime, Monday through Thursday, 11 to 7, and Friday, 11 to 3. So last, to sign up for events or find out any more information about the programs and services, go to the Huntington Woods Library webpage and organ my bus, 248-543-9720.
And one more thing, Chris, the Eagles, the Ferndale High School marching band won the division.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
They won the marching band competition down, the state competition, right?
Right, right.
Ford Field on Saturday.
Absolutely. Thank you.
It was really big. Very cool.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks.
And finally, Commissioner Perry, planning DDA.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning commission and DDA did not meet this month, but they will be meeting in January. I'm thinking it's probably going to be January 22nd. I haven't seen the organizational thing yet, so we'll see in a minute. At 7:00 PM right here at City Hall. So join us if you can. Thanks. That's all I have.
Any other issues? All right. Next item, the official certification and election report of the general election held Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021. Amy.
So we had 52% of Pleasant Ridge voters come out for the election. The bulk of the absentee ballots were counted up at the county at a central town location. And then the rest of the ballots that came in after 4 o'clock on Monday went and were counted in the crease. Brett Scott in the mayor position received 1,050 votes. In the city commission race, Alex Lenko received 756 votes. Katie Schmier received 742 votes. And Tom Wilkinson received 721 votes. And then the water infrastructure mileage proposal, yes votes were 668 and no votes were 610. The election's been certified by the county. I received the official certification. So the results were accepted and certified. So it's up to the commission to see the valid work.
Okay. What do we do? All right. Do we have a move, a motion to receive and accept the report?
Your honor, I move that the official certification and election report of the November 2nd, 2021 city general election be received and filed.
Do we have support?
I second.
Any discussion? Can we take a vote, please?
Commissioner Wal?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. And just so you know, Pleasant Ridge beat Huntington Woods. But they only had two people running for two seats, so it really didn't... It's kind of a Pyrrhic victory. We'll take anything we get. But we were second in the county, so that's very good. The next item is the administration of the oath of office.
Cool.
So first up would be... Do you want him up?
Yeah, why don't we bring him up and...
Short legs.
She is very... I'm sorry. Go ahead. There we go. Thank you.
Raise your hand. I Brett Scott.
I Brett Scott.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Pleasant Ridge City Code and City Charter.
The Pleasant Ridge City Code and City Charter.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of mayor.
Of the office of mayor.
And I will endeavor to secure and maintain.
And I will endeavor to secure and maintain.
An honest and efficient administration of affairs.
An honest and efficient administration of affairs.
Of the city of Pleasant Ridge.
Of the city of Pleasant Ridge.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities. Wow.
So we can get the Pleasant Ridge in the background. Amy, you come in. There you go. Thank you.
I Alex Lenko.
I Alex Lenko.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Pleasant Ridge City Charter and City Code.
The, let me say that again.
The Pleasant Ridge City Charter and City Code.
The Pleasant Ridge City Charter and City Code.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of city commissioner.
Of the office of city commissioner.
And I will endeavor to secure and maintain.
I will endeavor to secure and maintain.
An honest and efficient administration.
An honest and efficient administration.
Of the affairs of the city of Pleasant Ridge.
Of the affairs of the city of Pleasant Ridge.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities. Thank you.
Okay.
Just one more. Perfect. Great. Thank you.
I Katie Schmier.
I Katie Schmier.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Pleasant Ridge City Charter and City Code.
The Pleasant Ridge City Charter and City Code.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of city commissioner.
Of the office of city commissioner.
And I will endeavor to secure and maintain.
And I will endeavor to secure and maintain.
An honest and efficient administration of affairs.
An honest and efficient administration of affairs.
Of the city of Pleasant Ridge.
Of the city of Pleasant Ridge.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Now, watch, watch the magic.
Congratulations on some... Thank you. Thank you for everything. I know.
Alex there.
Yeah. You're going to love that seat.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Here's where I admit I should have been watching Kurt closely. All right, well, let's move on to governmental reports. Do we have governmental reports tonight?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Good evening, everybody. Wow, it's nice seeing the path out so I can get a good message out to Pleasant Ridge tonight. So for those who don't know me, I am fire chief Teresa Robinson, Ferndale Fire Department, which is also your fire department. So in Pleasant Ridge, for the month of October, fairly busy month. And we did have a couple carbon monoxide calls, so it's just a great opportunity to remind people with the weather getting cooler and everybody turning on their furnaces and boilers, make sure you're getting a service check, those tune-ups every year to ensure your homes are safe. And we did just change clocks, which also means change the batteries in your smoke alarms and sure you have smoking, or working smoke detectors in your home, because we want to keep everybody safe. So we've had kind of a busy month, but we're going to try to keep everybody safe. And I think that's the bulk of what I have. You got any questions for me, anybody?
Just a quick question. I recall that there was a program where people could get smoke alarms or carbon monoxide alarms. Is that still available or?
When they're available. A lot of that goes on donations and stuff. I'm not sure. I'd have to see what we have left, but they can call us.
Okay.
So there's a couple of things we provide at our fire department. One of them, when we have them available, we could provide free smoke detectors and not really carbon monoxide, but the smoke detectors. So that's for the homeowner. If you are a renter, that would be your landlord's responsibility. But if you are the homeowner, call us. One of the other things we offer free to our citizens and you guys would be our community also, is home safety inspections. So if you want us to call, it's a very personalized. It's about an hour. We come out to the house and walk through and educate you about the hazards in your home. A lot of people will plug overload outlets, have dangers in their kitchen, different things around the house that they don't understand is dangerous. And it provides us the opportunity to do that personalized walkthrough. So again, that can be scheduled at our department. One of the other services we provide free is car safety, car seat safety inspections. And it's not just for the infant when you're bringing the brand-new baby home, but anytime the child changes to a new car seat, you can schedule. And we have people, it's actually a 40-hour class they go through to get certified. And they can actually inspect and help you properly install any of those car seats, regardless of the stage of car seat it is into your car. So those are all things we provide free. You just contact, you can either schedule them through the website or call the fire department.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep. And I'll just provide you with that.
Thank you. And police.
Good evening. Sergeant Reed from the police department. Chief Nowak is on his usual track up north as we speak.
That's right.
Just wanted to, number one, congratulate Mayor Scott and the two incoming commissioners. Wanted to let everybody know that right now, we have been doing great in the city. Cities around us have been getting hit by larceny from autos. Stealing stuff out of the cars. Lock the doors. We harp on it every year. Please help us, help you. If we lock the doors, we're, we're doing pretty well. Berkeley got hit pretty bad. Royal Oak's been hit, so if people can lock the doors, helps on all ends. We are moving into that time of year where we are hitting the phone scams. Just want to let everybody know that the FBI, the DEA, the US Marshal Service will not be asking you for gift cards. We have people that have unfortunately sent in thousands of dollars of iTunes gift cards. One of the scams that has been around for years is they will prey on our elderly population. They'll just answer the phone and say, Grandma or Grandpa, I'm in trouble, I need, you know, money to get out of jail. All of a sudden, money gets transferred. If you have any question at all, call us, we will check it out for you. Do not send gift cards, do not buy anything. The federal government does not want gift cards, so... Last thing, I don't know if Chief Noack talked about it earlier this year, but just wanted to point out that this is our centennial year for Pleasant Ridge Police Department. It's 1921 when Taylor Madison, is it Madison name? Yeah, Taylor Madison was sworn in. So I don't know if you've seen the officers that have been out and about this year, everyone has a centennial badge. So those are going away at the end of the year. We'll be back to our regular badges, but just wanted to point that out because we only have a month left of that.
That's awesome.
Very cool.
Any questions that I can answer for the commission?
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Any other governmental reports this evening? Okay. Uh, let's go on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion?
Mayor, I move the consent agenda be approved.
Support. Uh, any discussion on the consent agenda? Can we have a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes.
And next up on our agenda are all of the organizational items related to the change in the commission and positions that change every two years around boards and things that we sit on. And you'll see all of that in the meeting minutes if you go online to look for it. Did you have any comment on those, Amy, or...?
They're just the organizational items for the city commission and any kind of liaison appointments to, you know, outside entities or smaller committees that may meet for the city. It also includes the dates that the city commission meets, but Robert's rules of order will order the, the meeting. And then any staff appointments to, you know, such as the intergovernmental cable communications or to, we would have no actual association.
Right.
So those are the organizational items.
Excellent. And yes, it's all available in the meeting minutes, so you'll see who's been appointed to which commission. May I have a, a, a motion, please?
Your honor, I move items 11A through 11N regarding the organization of the 2021 through 2023 Pleasant Ridge City Commission be approved.
I second.
Is there any discussion on this item? Can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes. Um, our next item up is actually the liaison appointment. I'm not sure, did we come to an agreement on everyone?
Yes.
We did? I have to fill in the names.
Okay, hold on. Okay.
So which of us is on the recreation commission?
So that would be Commissioner Budnick.
Awesome. And who has the planning commission?
Commissioner Perry.
Okay. And the historical commission?
Commissioner Schmier.
And you've got the, uh, schools.
Commissioner Lenko.
Awesome. All right, so yeah, we have, uh, uh, four subcommittees that we support as a commission and we represent as liaisons. With me stepping down from the historical commission, it shifts a bit. And we always shift every couple of years anyway, so, um, usually that happens right during the meeting. I just found out, so...
So here it goes.
And so here it goes. May I have a motion, please?
Your honor, I move the appointment of Commissioner Budnick to the recre-, um, as liaison to the Pleasant Ridge Recreation Commission. The appointment of Commissioner Perry as liaison to the planning, Pleasant Ridge Planning Commission and Downtown Development Authority. The appointment of Commissioner Schmier to the, as the liaison to the Pleasant Ridge Historical Commission. And the appointment of Commissioner Lenko to the, as the liaison to the Ferndale Public Schools Superintendent Advisory Committee. Terms expire November 14th, 2023, be approved.
Do you have a second?
A second?
Awesome. Uh, any discussion on these? I think we just discussed it, actually.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm excited.
All right, well, let's have a vote.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes. And our next item on the agenda is the appointment of, uh, of people to support on the Woodward Heights, uh, project that we have on. We're going to hire a consultant to help us on Woodward Heights. We've spent a lot of time attempting to help issues for our neighbors on Woodward Heights. We know that the solutions that we've come up with are mixed, meaning that some people are happy with one thing and then not necessarily happy with other things that we do. So we thought after the activities of this, earlier this year, we would hire a consultant and put together a committee to address the issue. And I think that was probably good to just have someone that is a, uh, an impartial, just sort of unbiased view of the, of the situation on Woodward Heights to help us come up with a, an answer that might be more amicable to everyone that lives there and everyone else in the community. And with that, I think we're going to appoint two commissioners to sit on that committee. Have we decided on the two that we would like, or would that be a discussion?
So is, is this, uh, mayor, I'm sorry, um, is this a, a, a committee to help choose the consultant?
Yes, that's as I understand it.
Okay, great. Thank you. And not sit on like the actual committee of the thing?
Right.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
So there's a need for two commissioners to sit on this selection committee. Are there two that are, we've not selected yet, so...
I...
I'll volunteer.
Yeah, I'm interested.
Done.
There you go.
Is that okay for everyone?
Yes.
Awesome. All right, may I have a motion, please?
Mayor, I move the appointment of Commissioner Lenko and Commissioner Schmier to the Woodward Heights Traffic Calming Consultant Selection Committee be approved.
May I have a second?
I second.
Awesome. Uh, any discussion? A vote?
Thanks for stepping up.
Absolutely.
Now, I think it'll be great to, the planning commission has selected a couple people as well, who will sit on that with other folks. Who else will sit on that selection committee?
It'll be me.
Okay.
So there'll be five of us on that.
Cool.
And again, that's just to go through the responses we receive and if necessary, conduct interviews.
Right.
Great.
And RFQ has been prepared to find a consultant to support this project and, um, we should get some results rather quickly, I think.
Due back December 1.
May I have a vote?
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes. Uh, next item on the agenda is the water infrastructure funding discussion. Would you like to take that off, Jim?
We put this on the agenda just because now that the votes have been counted, the question is what's next. So I know that there was robust discussion over this, this issue leading up to the campaign, so I think, or leading up to the, um, the election. So at this point, um, April will be here sooner than we realized, when we need to be getting ready and preparing the budget for the coming fiscal year, which is when these decisions about how to fund this project have to be officially made. So, um, with that, we think it would be helpful if there's any direction that the commission wanted to give staff so that we could start working on anything, um, any kind of the processes or, you know, just however you want to proceed. So we're looking for discussion and, uh, direction and we'll, we'll go from there.
Okay, uh, would anybody like to, or anybody have comments on this topic?
Yes, and will there be time for public comment on this, or no? Like we did last time in October?
Uh, I'm...
You mean during the meeting?
During, yeah, during item number 13.
Okay. Uh, no problem.
Yeah.
Okay. Because I do have a resolution drafted to introduce, if appropriate, regarding the Citizens Advisory Commission, but I also would like to, uh, like hear from, gotcha, anybody who would like to say anything.
Okay.
If that's appropriate.
Uh, why don't we have a discussion about it and then come to your resolution?
Well, um, as Commissioner Schmier brought up at the October meeting, and I'm in full support of the Citizens Advisory Council to bring together a group of residents to form a consensus on how best to contain the millage and make sure there's adequate funding for the requisite work.
Mayor Scott?
Yes.
Hi.
Sorry.
No, that's fine.
I will learn this.
I know. It is weird. So I think, um, I do believe that the Citizens Advisory, whatever it, we end up calling it, a group of citizens coming together to work on this is a, is a great idea. I think there are, um, I, I would love for us to all like dive into like thinking about it a little bit. Should we, um, should, should we figure out a later date to like, like maybe do another meeting and a couple, a special meeting and sort of talk about that a little bit? Just so that we can all sort of dive into some more details? Like we'll be able to listen to what everybody has to say tonight and sort of think about that a little bit?
And one further point to that, I've had other discussions that obviously there's some amount of urgency, so, uh, right, it's an involved process, we're gonna need to have an application. First of all, we have to develop an application, send out applications, receive applications, select who's gonna be on the committee, right? So I don't know how much time we want to add to that, but, um, but yeah, this needs to be talked about.
Yeah, I, I do agree. I mean, I am in full support of putting together the committee and having another meeting to start working on, you know, the application, what the process is gonna look like, so we can move this forward as quickly as possible, but also making sure we get a very diverse group of people on that, so...
Yep, that sounds good.
Yeah, it, it makes sense to me as well to schedule another meeting to cover it because the item as presented in the agenda might not have brought out the people that wanted to talk about it. So we can have another meeting in a couple of weeks, maybe?
Yep.
And, um, and, uh, discuss how we put together a committee. I think that probably makes the most sense. And then the question would be, would we wait to make the decision on the committee at that meeting or this meeting? It might actually make sense to give you a resolution in that meeting, if we have it. I don't think there's any, um, uh, desire to, or objection to having it, it's just a question of when we do it.
So one other thing, like with how, you know, it's, it is a huge question of like, you know, which I think we can all dive into and sort of figure out how like the organization of these, of the committee can be. And should we get, maybe find an outside facilitator who will, you know, who has that expertise and everything and will facilitate the group? And it takes like all of us out of that kind of thing and it becomes a genuinely...
Organic, yeah.
Yeah. Authentically, um, citizen thing.
And I think all that we have to do tonight is give Jim some direction that we'd like him to investigate the committee. And then come back to us in the next meeting and say, here's what we recommend. Maybe we do something different, but at least there's a recommendation on the table. Is that right? And that's what my resolution is.
Oh, okay. So, I, yeah, so like if we can give them direction to like find a, you know, the city asks them to start searching for a facilitator and, you know, figure out a, a date on the calendar if, um, if that's agreeable to everybody.
Okay. Uh, are there people here that would like to speak?
Ralph Costelli, 27 Elm Park, Pleasant Ridge. I heard what Jim said about April's gonna be fast approaching. This was a long-term millage. As I understand it, our state-required expenditures are funded now or easily funded. There's an April every year. And there was just a massive infrastructure bill passed in Washington, part of which is to deal with lead in the water. There is no rush to implement this millage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
George Lenko, 32 Oakland Park. Certainly agree that there's no rush to implement the millage, but I would suggest there is a rush to figure out our own posture relative to this because other municipalities in Michigan have a dramatic shortfall in this matter and are already getting assistance. And the election that just happened suggests that many residents feel we don't have a shortfall, we can fund it ourselves. I think we need to clarify quickly as possible what is available in the federal bill and what our posture needs to be going forward ASAP.
And we started to look at the, um, language of the legislation. We know that it doesn't actually go as deep as every city quite yet, as I understand it, but we're going into that detail because I, I agree that we need to get as aggressive a posture as possible in order to get whatever money we can get. We don't know how much and how much will come to a community like Pleasant Ridge, but it's certainly zero dollars if we do nothing.
Right.
Yes, oh, sorry, yes, please.
Thank you, Mayor, congratulations. Congratulations to our new commissioners. Jay Ahmed, 92 Kensington. I have a thought of my own and then a statement that I'm here to read for one of our fellow, fellow neighbors, Perry Shaw. First, I'd like to add my voice to the numbers of people, including Alex and Katie, who believe that a city commission is the course which we should follow because I think there was a lack of citizen involvement from the get-go regarding this historic project. So to the extent that that can be made possible and can be acted upon forthwith, the, the better, as far as I'm concerned. So that's my thought. But then Perry Shaw is a neighbor who had a statement to read, but he is sadly unavailable. And with the commission's permission, I'd like to read his statement.
Yes, please.
Thank you. First off, a hearty congratulations to the new PR commissioners and mayor. Also, thank you to those who will continue to serve. I sincerely wish I could be there in person to congratulate, but dad duties for swim lessons take procedure, take precedence tonight. So, good luck, Perry. I wanted to share a few, a few thoughts with our government and residents at large regarding the recent election and the outcome of it. It has been mentioned a few times now that typically millages pass by overwhelming majorities in Pleasant Ridge, something to the tune of a 70-30 split. With that said, the results of this past election were anything but that, with only 30 votes separating the yes from the no. I hope this outcome, as a city, we can walk away with the following thoughts, given that result. The results were not a mandate, as in past elections, and the use of the millage should correct, should correlate accordingly. I ask that we engage a citizens' commission before any further funding decisions are made. As the city demographics continue to change with more new homeowners purchasing and uncapping taxes, there needs to be an awareness going forward that defaulting to millages for funding of city services needs to be vetted much more openly prior to place... of city services needs to be vetted much more openly prior to placing it on a ballot. What worked thirty years ago when we had far less variance in property taxes may not work now when the variances are so much more drastic, causing millage funding options to be much more disproportionate. Multiple non-biased funding options need to be presented to the residents at large well before ballot decisions are made. It's unfortunate that many residents were not aware of the impact of the millage until just weeks before an election. In-person voting shows that those who became more aware later in the process chose to vote against the millage, residents old and new. Rushing to a decision like this puts us in an unnecessary and precarious position if, when we ask the state, federal government for some portion of the newly-passed infrastructure bill. This was why there was essentially a plea by many to vote no and hold until we knew more about the availability of funding from the state, federal government. This is why our friends to the south, to the south of us did not choose a millage to fund the same work. Finally, after the new council is seated and ramped up, I request an election post-mortem be performed, an honest assessment of what worked well, what didn't work well, and what we can do to do better. One area to prioritize discussion is the lack of information being made available up until weeks before the election. I believe it to be a great miss that absentee ballots were cast prior to all options being presented clearly and openly, especially considering the majority of residents, as noted above, default to vote yes on millages historically, myself and many other no votes included. It took the work of a last-gasp and no-vote committee to help translate and raise awareness, or raise awareness about the options available to fund this work and try to bridge the communications gap. The thought that the residents should have known the information about the millage by attending a meeting in mid-summer leaves much to be desired, especially considering the size and duration of the funding decision. Let's ensure we do better going forward. I thank you for your time and hope that our city can learn from the election to pioneer new ways of thinking, organizing, communicating, and funding. Best, Perry Shaw, three Cambridge. I think Perry speaks for a lot of people here and I would echo all the sentiments in this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, just, just from a personal perspective, and to correct the number, I think the vote difference was fifty-seven or fifty-eight, not thirty, as mentioned.
I think you were talking about if thirty votes.
Oh, yes, for sure. Gotcha. When I look back through all of our notes on the city commission and when we began thinking about this topic, it's been longer than this summer and we've certainly had a lot of dialogue about it, although given everything else going on in the world, it did not receive a lot of attention from everyone because we were all occupied with many things in our lives. But there were two town halls, it's been in ridgers, it's been in meeting minutes, we voted on the millage in an open meeting, we've had workshops and open meetings. It has been possible for people to be informed, but it's completely understandable that in the circumstance that we're in right now, it was not easy to be informed. And I've often asked myself the question, when is over-communication not enough? I mean, really, how do you communicate in this moment to capture everyone's attention? I have a friend that was running for an election down in a small town called Tyrone, Georgia, and over the summer they approved a four-and-a-half million dollar bond that no one attended the meeting for. It, and then, and September it became an issue because it was obvious that it had happened and no one was there to see it because people were getting their lives back in order this summer. So certainly something we want to do over the next year is work on communication, knowing that communication is more difficult now than it was two years ago. It's just hard now. And we want to keep people informed. We're gonna have to figure out novel ways to do it so that it doesn't have to be this amazing scary thing to capture everyone's attention. It's just part of our business. Everyone goes to the website and sees things. We send letters to people, we send emails, whatever is necessary to just keep people informed of what's going on so that it doesn't feel like it was a last-minute thing because I can assure you it was not a last-minute thing. There was an opportunity for people to be informed. It was just a very difficult time for people to be informed. And as things became emotional, they popped up, we talked about them in the city commission meetings, we had a two-hour meeting about the pool and ten minutes about, uh, you know, funding for the city in the same meeting. It's just how the priorities rolled out last year. So we're gonna work on that. I'm gonna ask for all of your help to work on that because we gotta figure out how to communicate in this world that we're in right now. And I, not to dismiss what is just said, I just want to acknowledge that communication's gonna be tough in 2022, but we've gotta accomplish it so that people don't feel misinformed or uninformed. That's, that's gonna be my goal.
Well, Brett, I, I would just say in quick response to that, communication, communication is one thing, accurate communication is another. And you and I spoke about this. The, the information that was presented at the town hall was inaccurate. It's not that, it's not that information wasn't provided, and I talked to Jim about this. The information at the town hall, that literature that was sitting on that table said that the millage was the only option. That was just flat-out wrong. And then the ridger published that information when we were informed that there would be a pullback or a correction. There never was. So it's not just information, and I don't want to belabor this because that horse has long since died. But the information that's put out, we've gotta make really sure is accurate and we're giving the people who are gonna vote on this the accurate information so that it's transparent, open, and we don't have to have discussions like this. Everybody gets what the options are, they vote, and it's done. But putting out information before a ballot that's of this type of nature and so historic, where you don't say to people in the very literature that the city is putting out, here are your options. That was not done. It was not done.
If I may, the very fact that it is a ballot measure means that there are options. In fact, one of the reasons I supported the ballot is because it provides people an option. Now, we can argue whether the inaccuracies in the information would have changed a vote or would have, but there's no question that there were options because that's why it was a ballot measure. And it's why it gave people the option to, you know, vote one way or the other.
Sure, but then the literature shouldn't have said that. With all due respect, it shouldn't have said that there was no option.
I think what it suggested was, if, throughout the whole thing, is that this is one of the options. It is a ballot measure and this is what can be available. And we will continue the discussion because we're gonna have a commission or a action committee.
And I am, again, in strong support of that.
Again, not to disrespect what you've said at all.
I don't take any disrespect, and I mean don't disrespect either. Just, I'm trying to figure out a way that we can do better and I think we can improve upon that.
For sure. Yes, sir.
To rely upon people to have to go to the website to poll information is not communication. Pushing information to the residents is communication. We're tech-savvy, sort of. Other people aren't. But I never go to the city website. I shouldn't feel I have to go to the city website.
Mayor Scott, were there letters that went out? Was there a letter that went out about one of the town halls and then in the ridger?
Yeah, it was in the ridger, it was in eBlast, switch your email to the eBlast list. It was pushed to Facebook.
Okay.
And then you have, and then you have the issue of the lead pipe, which is mandated, the water mains that aren't. Water mains are two-thirds of the cost. Why on earth link them?
They are linked.
I know they were linked and they shouldn't have been.
They are linked because the lowest cost option is to service the mains while the lead is being removed from the system. All other options actually cost more money to the city over time. So that's, that's the logic behind it. Certainly they could be separated, but then there is an additional cost to the city because there are some things they might have to dig up twice. There are things that we might have to, you know, that might fail when we're replacing the lead in the service lines that might cause untimely repair. So that's part of the logic behind it. And by the way, I agree with you completely that electronic communication can't be the only communication, and that's why I ask everyone to help in this discussion on what the right forms of communication are, just to make sure the message gets out there. Because this is not the only topic where people have asked for, you know, altered kinds of communication. So I, I agree with you.
And in support of whatever the motion was that Alex will apparently eventually make on the Citizens Advisory Committee, how many people enjoy the pool and the rec center and the exercise facility? That was a result of a Citizens Advisory Committee. That's the only reason it got done. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Yes, please.
Sorry to come back up. Yeah, so, um, the nature of the information was not first quality. The highest taxable homeowners were considered cost outliers and not included in the materials. And then I was surprised, just hadn't thought about it, that on a go-forward basis, there are homeowners who would be charged far more than even the cost outliers would be. You can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the cost outliers topped out at maybe seventeen hundred bucks, maybe almost eighteen hundred bucks. And with home improvements that have happened this past year, it might be a thousand dollars more. And the only thing we could be sure of is five years hence, it'll be more still and it'll be more still and it'll be more still. So, um, the quality of the information really was not very good. It led people to bad decisions. And then the unofficial organ of the city, PRPR, spoke to situations highly emotional of, for instance, widows on fixed income who need to be protected, whereas we know of actual people under these circumstances who have moved in this past year and downsized by more than half, who will actually pay more than a fixed fee because they moved this past year. Bad move on their part. So really, any homeowner who will move in this city or will sell their home in this city in the next thirty years will be disadvantaged by this. And I honestly and sincerely don't think that this was made clear during all these information sessions. Thank you.
Were there any other comments? Thank you. Well, I think, um, uh, what we'd like to do is have another meeting in two weeks, maybe?
Uh, whenever you want to schedule it. Or Tuesday of the month is the normal backup city commission meeting date. That's the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, so it's depending on availability. Do I do that one? Or this is a five Tuesday month, so we could do the thirtieth. Really, it just depends on what we're sure you guys.
Does the thirtieth make sense for everyone?
Yeah, either works.
That sounds good.
And this would just be a commission meeting to discuss the CAC? Or would this be an open town hall style meeting?
Well, it would be a commission.
What's the format?
Yes, it'd be a special commission meeting.
Which is an open meeting.
Yes.
Right, of course, they're all open. Right. So we, I mean, we do have some decisions to be made. I think we do need a outside third-party facilitator for it. We figure out how many seats are gonna be on the commission.
Okay.
What the process is gonna be for selecting them. What the charter or the mission or the, you know, kind of the, the question you're asking them to solve is.
You know, do we want to get into the whole thing of should we be replacing water mains or not? Or should this really be a, a funding question for what is the right way to fund the overall project? You know, I had a, I had a call, Royal Oak has terminated their relationship with us for water maintenance services starting next spring, so I'm in the process of trying to figure out who is gonna do our water and sewer maintenance. And I had a, a meeting with the county, uh, just because they service a number of communities in the county. And it was interesting when they were asking me about what we do and, you know, do we, do we service our gate valves? And I was, no, we don't. Do we, you know, do we do fire hydrant flushing and testing? And no, we don't because we have issues. When we turn a fire hydrant, water pressure, we lose water pressure in some areas of the city, water turns brown, the gate valves break, so we don't do that. And they said, yeah, okay, well, we have experience working with communities like that. It's Royal Oak Township in Pontiac who are our peer water systems. You know, I heard the, a comment about our neighbors to the south, which I assume means Ferndale, and the reason that Ferndale's able to do this project, and Ferndale has about, they estimated about ten million dollars to replace all the lead service lines in their city. And they're ten times our size, so it's always a rule of thumb whenever Ferndale does something. If you want to extrapolate that to Pleasant Ridge, it'd be about a million dollars of our, you know, expenditure for this. And that's, you know, that's nothing. We could easily do this if that was the, the scale of our ask. That's because Ferndale's changed their water mains over the years and we haven't had to. So, um, I think that's a really important thing to, to keep our eyes on and also the fact that our water mains aren't really at risk of breaking at one particular point. It's, they're, they're the small six-inch cast iron mains that are corroding. And so at some future point, the water pressure and water flow issues will only get worse. And when that happens, they all corrode at pretty much the same rate. The issue is that it becomes a systemic problem and you can't fix it by, by replacing one water main or one section of water main. You'd have to replace all the water mains at once and that becomes a very difficult process. So anyways, do we want the CAC to get involved in that level of decision? Or no, we have to fund the total project? Because it is a thirty-year project to replace all the water mains. That's how we're trying to make this somewhat affordable for ourselves to do on a year-by-year basis.
Yeah, I think my, uh, personal view is, again, because this, uh, item was not presented as a discussion around in this fashion, it makes sense to have the discussion during the, if we're here on the thirtieth to do that. And then anyone that's interested in any, whatever position they have can be here for the meeting and then that, I think would be the best time to issue your, uh, resolution. You might even want to change it after the discussion in some fashion just to.
Meh.
Capture something.
It's generic enough in that sense. And, and I think too that, right, like we can put some time in between impulse and action because, I mean, Kensington is funded as far as like in a pilot or an experiment, right? Like as we start cracking into this, like I understand that the water mains might be impacted adversely as we start working on them, but also they might not be. So there will be lessons learned as Kensington is done.
Yep, I guess my personal view is if we could wind the, the clock back forty years, I would have, start funding this.
Right, exactly.
It's one of these things that's under the ground, you don't notice it. It's like a furnace or a roof or something that you just don't think about until it breaks, except.
Or our own sewer lines.
In your home, you have that option because you know that you can probably get a furnace in a few days. And if there's something that fails in a way that needs repair or just becomes unserviceable because the inside dimension changes, that's not something you can fix in a few days. It could become an unplanned and a rather expensive repair for the city. So the funding for this, whenever it starts, the funding for this should have started forty years ago. That's my sense. But we're here now, we have to come up with a way to fund this very expensive thing that we don't see and we never like spending money on things we don't see. I joked with a friend that, you know, we buy homes that speak to us, but sometimes when they talk, they want money. And this is one of those times for all of us where we're gonna spend something, we'll figure out a way that we're going to spend the money. Maybe it isn't exactly the millage or exactly a flat tax, but, or a flat fee, excuse me, we'll figure out something to get it funded, but I think the funding needs to, needs to happen. Even if the lead service lines weren't an issue, this is something we'd want to fund in order to make sure that we have a good water system, a full water system.
Thank you.
So on the thirtieth, I think we'll have this discussion again and do you have enough or do you need us to vote on something to have a discussion?
Well, if there's a resolution.
Would you, would you like to?
Okay, well, so I'm gonna say, Mr. Mayor, I move that a Citizens Advisory Commission be established to recommend what portion, if any, of the newly-approved millage and other sources be applied to the water infrastructure project. Further, that said advisory commission can be comprised of nine citizens, uh, appropriately balanced by geography within the city, by taxable values, and if allowable, again, by voting stance on the recent millage. And lastly, that city manager research and report back to the city commission one month concerning the features of the federal infrastructure bill related to the water supply and how they might apply to the city's own water infrastructure project. And I do know that research is being done, but that puts some timing around it.
Would it make sense, uh, sorry.
Go ahead, you first.
Would it make sense to separate the infrastructure piece only because I don't know that we'll know enough in a month?
I can tell you right now what I, what we know.
Okay.
Why don't I do that under city manager's report just to, just to put a bow on this one? And I don't think it's gonna.
Would you like to separate the two? Only because I just don't know.
No, I, I think the most important, yes, I mean, the answer is yes. I think it's fine to separate them. The most important thing is that we establish the CAC. Part of the information that's going to drive the direction of the CAC will be this infrastructure. Yes, so they're related, but not inextricable.
And, uh, I, I don't know about the number of people.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, and I need to spend a little time thinking about this, but in terms of balanced, I'm not sure it's just balanced by taxable value.
If I may, I'm sorry, I've done something out of order. Do we have a second? I think I have to ask for a second.
Right.
And then we discuss, sorry.
A second motion?
A motion has been made, and now somebody has to second the motion, and then discussion can proceed on the motion.
So we did it out of order, my apologies.
Can I ask, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to ask a question, and I apologize, this is procedural. I agree with the Citizens Advisory Committee, but if I don't agree with the way it's written as is, I don't second it, correct?
You can recommend a modification, and he would accept, and then we would...
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
So you can second a motion and say, I second for discussion purposes only, if you do not agree with the motion as presented.
Okay. So I, I second...
For discussion.
For discussion.
Discussion purpose.
Sorry, I will, I will learn this.
And now, with the consent of the motion maker and the seconder, you can amend the motion, you can suggest amendments with their consent.
Thank you. My apologies.
So it's been seconded, so...
So, I agree with what was said earlier about the number of citizens. I don't know if this, I don't know if nine is the right number, maybe we want to see a larger number. And again, in terms of taxable value, I don't know if that's the only balance that we're looking at. I think there might be other balances of people who are at different taxable values but feel differently. So I just think we need to have a representation beyond just taxable value.
And this is discussion, right? So part of nine was, in 2014, there was a Citizens Advisory Commission of fifteen people, and I believe, I mean, that consumed quite a bit of time. Understanding, obviously, you know, like, we do have another, like, there will be another budget in 2023, right? So, like, as far as where we set the deadline, I guess, is still a matter of debate, but if there's nine people rather than fifteen people, let's say, or thirteen, the speed of the discussion will proceed a lot faster. Consensus is, consensus is hard, consensus is possible, and with nine people, consensus is more reasonable than with fifteen.
We're also bringing in a third party who will facilitate this, and I'm sure also have recommendations.
As was in 2014, though. There was, yeah, there was a facilitator in 2014.
Again, I am just, I am just suggesting that committing to nine right now without getting a little bit more input is, is a little too fast to commit to the exact number of people.
Fair.
Yeah, that would be my recommendation, is that we might feel differently about nine or fifteen or some other number on the thirtieth than we do today. So I don't know that we have to decide that piece tonight.
Yeah. And then if we can take out the criteria, because I think that's something we can decide on the thirtieth, of sort of what the criteria of people on the committee would be, because I think that's a big part of that discussion kind of thing. But, yeah.
I support making sure it's balanced and it is representative and it hits, so it's not that. I just don't know at this moment if that balance is all about the taxable value.
Would you like to amend your amendment, amend your motion, sorry, based on the feedback?
Okay, so then, we could then do a revised version of this on the thirtieth after we agree to those specific attributes of the CAC?
We can. We'll still vote on it because it's been seconded, but, yes, but it means we'll do it again on the thirtieth.
Well, then, yeah.
As written.
Then let's simplify this. Let's make sure we stake this.
Or you could withdraw.
Put it on the table to the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's table it, then.
We'll table it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a comment. Can I make a comment or not?
Sure.
I just want everybody to know that I'm very impressed with everyone who spoke their truth and helped others understand what they meant, and nobody had a big argument about anything.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
I'm very impressed.
Thank you.
And I'm very happy that I came here tonight.
Great.
I learned a lot.
Great.
And you're all wonderful.
You, too.
Come back anytime. Do you have enough for the thirtieth?
Yeah.
Okay.
Great.
All right, I think we move on to the City Manager.
Great, quick question. So will that meeting be used, or will you have it at the rec center? Because I'm assuming you're going to have a lot bigger of an audience. Right?
I suspect we'll have it here. But let's figure that out.
Yeah, just for capacity sake, I think you might want to consider the rec center.
Okay.
And then will the facilitator that you're hiring be at that meeting? Will they be placed by the...
Yes, could you, could you come up and say who? Yeah, just for the record.
Will the facilitator that you're bringing on be at that meeting on the thirtieth?
Um, we won't have chosen the facilitator yet.
Okay.
Sorry. Sorry, name and address?
Oh, sorry, Christine Matthias, 106 Ell Park. I still stay at Maplefield sometimes, we were there for ten years.
Yeah. Okay, I think that's it for that one. City Manager's Report.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is all very preliminary, but I'll tell you what I know about the infrastructure bill. And what we care about is the fifty-five billion that's in there for water generally. Lead pipes, I think, is about fifteen billion total for the, for everybody in the country. The infrastructure bill sends that money to the state drinking water revolving loan funds, and then the states are going to be responsible for distributing that out. The infrastructure bill and the drinking water revolving loan funds also give preference to disadvantaged communities, and that's a criteria based on income and, you know, other factors which do not benefit Pleasant Ridge. Given that there's a large influx of money coming in, there may be money available for communities like Pleasant Ridge, but the number I've seen, and this was reported out by John Lamachia at the MML in one of the updates he gave on this, is that probably half the money that you see, that fifteen billion or whatever it is, I think the state of Michigan's slated to receive one-point-three billion total from this, probably, probably half of that is going to be in the form of loans. So the question is, it's not free money, or it's not, you know, it's money you can use to advance a project, but you're still paying the interest on it. Is that something we might want to do? Possibly, yes, depending on the interest rates and what the advantages of that are. The grants or the forgivable loans will probably still, in large part, be targeted towards disadvantaged communities, but if the pie is big enough that, you know, places like Pleasant Ridge could qualify, that'd be great. But I think the point is, there's a lot of, there's just, there's a lot we don't know yet, because the state has to decide how they're going to do the distributions. When I sent to the commission the state's intended use plan for their drinking water revolving loan funds for this year for the applications they got, and I think it was ninety-five percent of the, of the projects that they approved were for those distressed or disadvantaged communities. So that's, that's where a lot of the money goes currently.
At Benton Harbor.
Or Benton Harbor, right, exactly. So, you know, that's the, always, with any kind of state funding or, you know, competitive funding or formula funding, we're, you know, we have an uphill fight to get a piece of that. So that's what I know right now. I remain cautiously optimistic that we'll be able to get something to help with this, but I, you know, there's, I don't see anything that's a guarantee. The American Recovery Act funds, we got two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars allocated to us because that was a program formula that every community got, that we're using that to do our detailed materials analysis that the state's requiring us to do. So that, that's, you know, that offsets an expense that the state imposed on us there, but there's no similar, similar formula in the Infrastructure Act. It's all the process following the drinking water revolving loan fund existing methods. And I think they did that just because it's an existing process for getting the money out, get it to the states and let them distribute it. So we don't know how this is going to unfold. And so I can't really offer any, any better guidance for what that means for us, because only time will tell. And this is for fiscal year twenty-two, which starts, but this rolls out over the course of, I think, five years. So there's an allocation for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five in the, in the Infrastructure Act. So we'll know more soon, but I think that's all I can really share with any kind of accuracy right now. Hard to, hard to plan.
Right. We're always faced with the two basic questions, do we do it, and then how do we pay for it if we do it? And I think that's part of the answer that we'll get out of the committee, is to understand both pieces. I think we, I think the majority of people agree that it is something that needs to be done, and then it's a question of how does this, how does this get paid for? And if money comes our way from outside source, of course, that gives us the option to adjust what money is taken in from residents in order to pay for this, and that could happen at any point in time over the next twenty years. But that's always something, we're not shy at all at asking for grants and other money from outside, so we'll do it in this case, too. Anything else on city business?
Uh, no, nothing tonight.
Other business? Nothing? Thanks, everyone that came out tonight, thanks, everyone that voted in November. It's, to have that many people vote in off-election year was pretty amazing, so I'm humbled to be here, sitting here, and I know everybody else is as well. Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
I second.
That's a wrap.
Excellent.
Thanks, everyone.
There's a reception in the last.
There is a reception.
Oh. Cool. Cool.